It is now, I guess it's five minutes after two, I will now call the meeting to order.
Dave, would you lead the flag?
I'll actually lead it. Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, a God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Head, has the meeting notices been properly posted?
Yes, I certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay, thank you very, very much. At this point, we will have a presentation of the 2018, 2019 proposed tax increase and our CFO will do that for us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes, this is the first of two required tax rate hearings. So the proposed tax rate, this is the same tax rate that, as the current tax rate. So we are proposing for maintenance and operations, a rate of eight cents per $100 of assessed valuation and in the interest and sinking fund, which is for the debt service fund, 2.78 cents for a total of 10.78 cents per $100 assessed value. That is the proposed tax rate. So just some highlights for this process, we have received the certified values from the Harris County Appraisal District and Montgomery County Appraisal District in late August. The effective tax rate notice was published on September 5th as required by state law and public hearing notices were published on September 11th, also again as required by law. The interest and sinking fund rate is calculated based on the necessary tax revenues to pay the annual general obligation debt service. And then just to show a comparison of the proposed tax rate, the blue line is Lone Star College's tax rates for the past 15 years and the red line is the state average. So you can see that we have continued to remain well below the state average. And then just a picture of the tax value history of assessed values, the red is Harris County, the blue is Montgomery County. So Harris County does make up about roughly 75% of our taxing jurisdiction. You can see that we had exceptional growth in fiscal years 15 and 16, but now for fiscal year 19, we are at an estimated assessed value growth rate of 3.66%, which is much more in line with stable long-term growth rates in assessed value. The preliminary estimates last April was 4.6% and in the budget, we assumed about a percentage point lower just to be conservative and I'm glad we did because this is about where it's coming in at. So that's assessed values, this is the property taxes that get generated by those assessed values. You can see that Lone Star College in prior years had decreased the tax rate and this, this proposed tax rate of 10.78 cents would be the third year in a row of keeping the same tax rate. And then just the calendar, as you can see today is the first public hearing, September 26 would be the second public hearing and then at the regular October board meeting is when the board would vote on this proposed tax rate. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions?
Can you tell us how much of the value that you showed us just there is in new?
Let me see if I have the new, I know the, we are estimating about 3.5 million in revenue off of the new properties. I'm not sure if I have the actual value of new properties handy. Let me see if it's in there here.
3.5 million?
3.5 million in the tax revenue generated off of the...
Which is what percentage of our operating budget?
Um, it's about...
Less than...
Yeah, our operating budget is 380 million.
So a little less than 1%. So we all know that we're having some cost of living increase and since that's kind of a measure of, of looking at where the, the value of the dollar is as we move forward, its buying power, doesn't it seem that we should be thinking about ensuring that our taxes to meet our operating budget, given the, the increase that we got from new value is really the only increase we've been using to, to offset that?
So we are in total, the budget adopted by this board in August estimated a total increase in tax revenues of 9 million. So 3.5 of that is what's coming off of new properties. So the balance is what would be generated off of existing properties because we are proposing 10.78 cents is, is greater than the calculated effective tax rate of 10.71 cents. 10.71 cents is what would generate the exact same tax revenue dollars as the prior year.
But we know that we can't operate on the same budget as the prior year.
Right.
We know that going in.
And that, that is why we have proposed the same tax rate as last year, the 10.78 cents, even though that is above the effective tax rate, it does generate the sort of additional growth from the growth in assessed values, which is that 3.66%.
So what you're saying basically, the growth in old property and the addition of new property is enough to take care of the obligations that we have?
Yes, and that is what we built into the budget that this board adopted in August for the fiscal 2019.
Are the reported values, do they take into account the value decreases due to Harvey?
Yeah, so this includes the estimated hearing losses and it includes the certified values that was certified by the appraisal districts as of January 1, 2018. So yes, this would already include any effects of Harvey on those home values.
It's, so what I think I'm hearing from trustee Vogt, and I encourage him to correct me, is you're not 100% certain that this tax rate is adequate to give us a good enough cushion?
I think it's okay for this year, but I think in looking ahead, I think we need to look at a programming that in, that envisions some increases in our tax rate to cover the growth of our, of our budget. And I'm not encouraging a growth in the budget.
Let me answer that. So at the last board meeting though, we approved a, or the board approved a board policy where we'd be working on that and we were not, not that in particular, but a balance between taxpayers and student, the tuition and fees and the, the tax revenues. So we've been working on a five-year plan. Now this year, taxpayers actually, we increased one or 2%. So we went from what, 41 to 42%? What's, what are taxpayers paying this year?
Yeah, it's around 41 to 42%.
So if our growth comes back, I think you're going to see this leveling out a little bit, but that, the, the board policy is going to dictate, largely dictate exactly what we're doing. Jennifer and I have already started taking a look at the five-year budget proposal based on some scenarios and then when we have a retreat in February, whenever we're going to have that retreat, we were going to come back and kind of show you all the scenarios that play out. But that was the board policy that was passed last time to level that out. So right now, if we have the growth we think we're going to have and, and for recurring from, recovering from the hurricane, then, then that's, it's going to be a different percentage that we have right now. But that's, that was the purpose of that policy was to level, level that out over a five-year period, so. So for the time being though, I mean this year, we, we have enough money. Now going forward, it depends on what our growth is going to look like. I'll, we'll know a little bit more after the spring semester in what the state does. That's the key to this. So if the state percentage stays at 21, then we can calculate that. If it drops down to 18 or 19 of a percentage of our budget, then we have to go back and come back to you and go, here's what we see. I mean, I hear, I hear what you're saying. And clearly in their budget proposal that she gave for the, the scenarios was 140 or 50 million dollars we'd be adding over the next five years?
Yeah, it was 130 million.
Yeah, to, to reach the per, the median of per student expenditure. So I, I, what I'm saying is we'll come back with you with a series of what-ifs and scenarios. So, because we just don't have a crystal ball about our growth or assessed value or what, so.
I share David's concern. I mean, you, we thought that the rate of growth was going to be 4.66 and so for purposes of planning the budget, we took 3.66 and it turns out that that's where it is. So we've already consumed that cushion that we built in. And if our growth in enrollment is not what we expect, we're going to take a double hit. And I join David in his concern.
I have a question, you may not have this and it's not critical either, though you talked about how our tax rate has been stable, you know, the last three or four years. Navigating community colleges, you have any idea how their tax rate has grown over the years? And it's not, if you don't have that, that's okay, we can talk about it later. I was just curious.
Yeah, I don't have that. I do have, and of course I didn't bring that other chart that I showed at the last board meeting, but I do have that we are among the 50 community colleges in the state, we are the seventh lowest tax rate. But I do have, and I can get separately, the comparison to our Gulf Coast community colleges and the peer group.
Well, I have that, I just remembered that. Now you had each college.
Yes, we have that chart now that shows all 50 community colleges.
No, don't worry, I go back and look, look it up myself. Okay. Any other questions, board members?
Why are we opposed to not tracking the way the state increases, why can't we?
Why, why are we, I can't hear...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Why are we not tracking? I noticed you say the state was increasing?
Well, so that is the tax rate and of course, one of the things that plays into this too though, is assessed values. So one of the things that allows us to keep a lower tax rate is we are in a very healthy assessed value location. So other areas in the state that may not have property values growing like we have seen them grow, then puts more pressure on what their tax rate is. So we have been able to generate additional tax revenues over these past three years without having to increase the tax rate. Some others of the state may not see that same effect. So there's, there's multiple variables that goes into tax rates across the whole state. Yeah. So yeah, we, our taxing jurisdiction is one of, I forget the ranking, but we are towards the, one of the highest, I think within the top 10 of the 50. the top 10 of the 50 community colleges for the size of our assessed value, the total property value of our taxing jurisdiction. We have one of the highest.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of announcements. There will be another tax rate hearing on Wednesday, September 26 at 5:00 p.m. here at North Harris. And we will also vote on the proposed tax plan during our regular meeting Thursday, October 4 at 5:00 p.m. Instead of the meeting being here at North Harris, that meeting is going to be at Tumble in the Beckendorf Conference Center, so you might want to mark your calendars accordingly. Helen, do we have any citizens wishing to, not today? Okay. Well, our meeting is now adjourned.